It started.
Thank you.
We have to wait for Lee to get moved in.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Okay, welcome to the township of West Orange Planning Board Special Meeting, October 25th, 2023, 7:30 PM. This meeting has been no given, a notice has been given to the public and township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar and sent to the Western's Chronicle Star's ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start at 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. The next regular planning board meeting will be held November 1st, 2023, 7:30 via Zoom. Roll call, please. Yeah, Mallette.
Mr. Albert. Mr. Cardoza.
Present.
Is there where you know?
Present.
Mr. Jensen. Mr. Klein.
Here, can I, oh, go ahead, keep going.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mrs. Marado.
Here.
Mayor McCartney.
Present.
Council President Williams. Mr. Wilks.
Here.
Chairman Bagel.
Here. Okay, uh, Ms. McGovern, let the record show that Mr. Klein certified to the secretary that he read, that he listened to last minutes, less, the last meeting of this application's minutes.
Okay, so that was the October 4th meeting, correct?
Right, that's correct, Mr. Klein.
I watched the Zoom, I watched the Zoom.
Watched the Zoom, perfect, okay.
Just in case, uh, Mr. Jensen was also absent the last meeting, I sent him the report, but uh, I'm not sure, I never receive anything from him, so if he's not, he's not gonna be doing it.
He's not here tonight either, so that's, it's a...
I mean, just in case he joins later.
Okay.
Okay. Uh... Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Hess, Mr. Greigle, if you please detrace your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. The application before us is PB 21-01, West Orange Plaza Block 152.01, lots 1445 and 1445.05 Zone P-C slash R5235 Prospect Avenue. Improvements to the West Orange Shopping Plaza with addition of new buildings for the applicant, Mr. Meese.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Greg Meese, attorney for the applicant. At the last meeting, we have completed our cross-examination of Mr. Steck. I believe tonight that, uh, Mr. Steck should be open for questions, both to the board and the public.
Okay, Mr. Steck, are you here?
I will add him now as a panelist.
Yes, and, and he'll have to be visual, please.
Along with Mr. Malanga, who is his attorney, is the attorney presenting him as an expert.
I have promoted both.
Thank you.
Mr. Smack, Steck, you are still sworn in.
That's my understanding.
Excellent, thank you. So at this time, uh, the mem, Mr. Malanga, the members of the board will ask questions.
Yes.
Okay.
I should have an opportunity to redirect Mr. Steck, would you like to have questions first?
Yes, Mr. Malanga, go right ahead.
Now, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you prefer the board to do so, because then that would just give me an opportunity to do everything at once, it might be easier that way.
Okay, whatever you feel, whatever you feel is reasonable, we'll do that. Mr. Wilks, do you have any, Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
Um, no, I do not.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Albert, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
I do not.
Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
Not at this time.
Mr. Smiraldo, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
Not at this time.
Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
Uh, yes, Mr. Steck, um, you testified at a late hour at the last meeting. Would you be able to briefly summarize your testimony, just perhaps the conclusion you arrived at and the reasoning?
Uh... Ye- yes, uh, I, I, I think, uh, Mr. Malanga will ask me some additional questions that may further clarify it, but uh, bottom line is that, uh, the applicant has applied the coverage ratio for the PC zone, so the building coverage and the impervious coverage ratio, uh, the applicant calculated it based on the entire site, the portions that are in the R5 zone, as well as the PC zone, which I considered improper, um, especially because this is an application before the planning board where all the uses are supposed to be permitted uses. And because the, uh, applicant is counting land in the R5 zone that doesn't permit commercial use, uh, in my opinion, that was improper and in fact triggered a D variance, even though there's no building there, by counting that land, uh, it's in my opinion, a, a commercial use. Uh, I also, uh, concluded that based on earlier testimony, um, there's a, a building in the front, I think it was building C, that had a drive-through and 10 signs, and I said that despite the fact that the applicant said they are not proposing a fast food restaurant, uh, the plans spoke to me as if, uh, at least there was one fast food restaurant there that's not permitted, uh, in the zone.
Mr. Steck, can I, can I stop you? So I just want to make sure we're clear, this is the second component to your conclusion, right?
This is a... Yeah, there were, there were, um, yeah, one component was, uh, it's improper to count the R5 residential zone, and, and I said that, um, uh, that right now, if you only account the 23 acres in the PC zone, uh, the building and the impervious coverage appear to be conforming, but with the expansion that proposed, are, is proposed, um, at the very minimum, it, it exceeds the, both the building and the impervious coverage for the PC zone portion. Uh, and then I had a separate comment about the restaurant, and I said that, uh, countering the testimony of Mr. McDonough, the applicant's planner, I said that I didn't think there was a justification to have that building, that, I believe it's building C, having its back end facing Prospect and the park, and having all the signs on that building as well as the drive-through there that violates the setback.
That, that, that's sufficient for, for my question. I, I do wonder, and perhaps, Ms. McGovern, you can cut me off if this will send us far afield. I wonder if we can save a great deal of time by simply, you know, addressing i-if the board were to accept, uh, Mr. Steck's testimony, which I'm not saying it would intend to, what is the remedy being proposed here? I, I really...
Well, we have to move through, we have to move through the process, Mr. Cardoza.
What, what is, what he's suggesting is that it was not properly noticed, and, and I have reviewed the notice, and I believe even if you exempt out the R property and you have perhaps, if that's, uh, correct, and we heard on cross-examination last time that, um, Mr. Steck had a different opinion when he was the hired by the planner for another application at the very same site, but if, even if you were to not include the, um, the residential property, what they're suggesting is it would create new variances and that perhaps the notice was inadequate. I don't believe that the notice is inadequate, even, even if, and I don't believe that that's a correct way of, um, interpreting it, because we, and I think Mr. Greigle, as the township planner, is going to speak to how you act accurately, um, would calculate this and why you wouldn't separate that out. But, but their notice covered the exact description in very great detail as to what was going on on this property, and this, the second aspect of this is, um, what they're suggesting is, don't believe the applicant, it sounds like, don't believe the applicant if they're representing that it's a fast food repres-rep, that it's a fast food, um, that it's not going to be fast food, because I think Mr. Steck testified last time, uh, based upon his experience to drive-through windows, uh, creates that almost, um, uh, it, it creates the, uh, the, the, uh, idea that this is what's going to be here, what the applicant has agreed and has stipulated is that it will not be if...
Leave you frozen. But, uh, I, I appreciate the explanation, I believe that helps to set, um, kind of mile marker in our minds before we get into the weeds here.
Uh, are you done, Mr. Cardoza?
I am, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, is, uh, Council President Williams here? No, is Mr. Jensen here? Hello, I'm sorry, I must, my connection is not wonderful tonight for some reason.
Yes, same.
Mr. Jensen, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony at the last meeting?
No, I do not.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, Mr. Greigle, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony from the last meeting?
Yes, just maybe one, one, one or two real quick ones, thank you. Um, just wanted to follow up on the comment just made or the response and your testimony regarding the land being the residential zone. Is there any change being proposed to the land that's there currently in the residential portion of this property versus, you know, today versus the proposal?
Um, the applicant is not making any physical improvements, but they're using the land uh, to receive stormwater runoff. Um, but they're not making any physical changes, is my understanding.
Okay. Um, now, you, given, you know, well, a couple of things, the other one is with regard to that, just a question, is there a section in the West Orange Land Use Regulations Ordinance that talks to how you calculate coverage or setbacks or anything with regard to what zone a property is in?
Um, it has, uh, well, each zone has a list of permitted uses, and, uh, the, as you know, the standards are different in the different zones. So in my opinion, uh, if you are proposing, um, a use in a zone that's permitted, uh, you go to the table and, and apply the ratios. But if you go into a zone where the use isn't permitted, um, it requires a use variance.
Maybe that didn't, and to, I, I'm not sure they answered the question I asked, I'm just curious. Again, see, for example, coverage, are you using that, would, would there be use variance based on coverage, impervious coverage or building?
No, the, the fact that, that the, that the applicant is treating the entire site as if it were in a PC zone, in my opinion, is evidence of a use variance.
Okay, again, exists, but you not, but you acknowledge it exists today as a commercial property that's partly in that zone, so is, is, is variance being triggered, is, is that, is there, you're, I guess, maybe I'm just trying to clarify for the board's sake and the public, the variances you're saying are triggered because of that, if you follow your interpretation, would be, what type of variances, C or D variances?
It's a D variance, because commercial use is not permitted, uh, in the R5 zone.
I, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't understand, the lot coverage and building coverage requirements, if they're being violated, based on your calculation, would that be a C variance or a D variance?
Well, the, it's fundamentally a D variance, because the applicant is treating the entire, two things, the applicant is treating the entire property as if it was in a, a PC zone, which in my opinion is improper. Um, and the public, and, and if you looked at our, for argument's sake, if you looked at just the 23 acres uh, that are in the PC zone, the applicant would need a, a building coverage variance and an impervious coverage variances, and, and those are not identified in the public notice.
Okay, you, we're mixing and matching here, but I, I won't belabor it, I just, if there was a lot line drawn at the boundary of the two zones, and there was a coverage variant, a building coverage variance or impervious coverage variance required, would that be a D variance?
That would not be a D variance if, if there was a lot line along the zone line.
Okay. Okay, I just want to try to clarify that, thank you, um. And it's one other que, I, I, my notes that last, your testimony, you mentioned there's quote, very limited landscaping proposed along Prospect.
Uh, there's a very, you know, considering, um, that there's a 300-foot setback, and the applicant is arguing that there's much more parking that they need, uh, and, and if you look at the spacing of the landscaping, that front building C, in my opinion, is very visible from the motorists, and they're going to be looking at the back of that building as well as the drive-through.
Okay, that's, as compared to what's, what's their vi-view of today?
They're going to supplement what's there today, but if you look at the spacing and the types of, um, uh, landscaping that's proposed, it's going to be quite visible. Again, the, there's a, the applicant clearly wants, uh, in my opinion, uh, light landscaping, so everything is visible. And I mentioned that across the street, you have a fairly sensitive land use, the, um, Essex County Reservation, uh, which is wooded and used by pedestrians.
Okay, but just, maybe it's a step back, my question was more as to what, what the, a building there would be, if this was approved in the future, compared to what's the view of currently for passing motorists, uh, from the site?
Well, the, the applicant is making some improvements by putting in islands there, but i-in, in my opinion, i-if you look at, on balance, what's going on, again, we have new buildings A and B that are fairly close to the northern property line, um, and you, you have some additional landscaping, uh, but the applicant is testifying that they have much more parking than they need, so, uh, my, I have two responses, one, why don't you put more or a wider landscaping strip al-along Prospect? Um, and number two, uh, why face building C internally when, uh, on balance, more people are going to see it driving uh, down Prospect than, than they are from in the middle of the site?
Fair enough. Okay, that's all, that's all to clarify those things, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, do you have, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Malanga, I think you're up.
Uh, did Mr. Wilks have an opportunity to?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Bagel, I think also members of the public.
Uh, Tammy, I'm sorry, Tammy Williams has joined the board. Okay, um, we'll go to the members of the public, uh, does anybody from the public? Please raise your hand and be identified, and, uh, ask Mr. Steck any questions you have.
At this moment, I am not seeing any hands. Oh, there's one.
Okay.
Hey. Terry, please state your name and address for the record. Terry, you must unmute yourself.
Terry, Trick Scales, 85 Clark and Drive. Okay, I, I want to start by thanking everyone who was serving in the capacity, um, on this board. And it can't be easy, the decisions that you have to make. Um, I live in Crystal Woods, so Prospect Avenue, Eagle Rock Avenue, uh, that's my neighborhood, that's my playground, I know the area very well. Um, I'm really disheartened by all of the development that's going on.
Ma'am, ma'am, you, you may ask a question, it's got to start with when, where, why, what, how, as opposed to making a statement, which you could do later on, so please ask a question.
Okay, so please tell me what building A, B, and C are being used for.
Okay, we have to focus on what Mr. Steck said at the last meeting, and you can ask a question about Mr. Steck's testimony directed towards Mr. Steck, and that's the, that's what we're up to right now.
So was that question inappropriate that I just asked?
He didn't testify what the buildings are. He testified about planning and ca-and the, and the zone, and two zones, and, uh, and foliage on Prospect Avenue and the location of a building.
Okay, this is all so mysterious to the general public, um, it, it, it's really disheartening, but go ahead, I'll wait until later.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Steck? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Sally Malanga is raising her hand. I will allow her to speak now. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. My question for Mr. Steck is regarding the 10 acres in the R5 zone. Would it be reasonable for the applicant, uh, to be required, um, as a condition by this board uh, to put a conservation easement on those 10 acres to make sure that their calculations meet their legal liability?
Uh, well, that would obviously need the consent of the applicant, but i-if the applicant is saying, uh, I'm going to reserve that as open space, it would seem to me, uh, you know, I never build on it, it would seem to me that it would be a a stronger guarantee for the neighborhood, that, uh, if any approvals are granted, they would be subject to the establishment of a conservation easement that would be, you know, recorded in the deed, so any, uh, purchaser of the property or developer in the future wo- would, um, uh, be alerted to the fact that that can't be used for any more development.
Understood, but would it, would it then solidify their calculations, because their calculations now require that 10 acres in order for their calculations?
It, it doesn't change the calculations, in my opinion, the, the, the calculations are based on the entire site, and that essentially means that the applicant is assuming that it's correct to count the residential zone as if it were a PC zone, which I think is improper. So it, it doesn't change the numbers. Yeah, my, my only comment before is that under the current scenario, what's built there today, uh, if, if one were to subdivide the property along the zone line, um, while there might be buffer violations, the building coverage and the impervious coverage would be conforming. But, but not, but not with the new, with not the proposal, what's out there today would be conforming in terms of building and lot coverage if the, the property were subdivided along the zone line.
Thank you. No further questions from me, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malanga. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Steck on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I see no other hands at this time.
Okay, we will end public comment, Mr., uh, where are you here? Mr. Malanga, wherever, I missed you here, sorry.
Yes.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Mr. Steck, at the last hearing, you were cross-examined extensively by Mr. Meese with regard to your testimony at the prior application for this site in the year 2000. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, except he was referencing a date of 2004, which I think is an incorrect date. I, I, I testified in 1999.
Or, or 2000.
It's, or, I think the applicant, yes, the, the, uh, the applicant was filed, I believe, in 1999, and I testified on behalf of the applicant at that time in the year 2000.
And at the last hearing, you stated that the residential zone was not utilized for the application, is that right?
Uh, I was, when I was questioned by Mr. Meese, I didn't recall that that approval was never constructed, so I assumed that the current layout of the property was what was approved, uh, back in 2000, 2001. Um, I have since learned that the applicant, uh, did not, uh, construct that improvement, but I, I did have the ability to, um, uh, do research, have research provided to me a-about exactly what that proposal was, uh, back in, started in 1999.
All right, so I, I gave you copies of your transcript, and I gave you copies of the site plan, is that right?
That's correct.
And you reviewed those?
I did, I have.
And based upon your review, your testimony previously needs to be corrected so that you indicate that, in fact, the prior application did utilize the residential area for the construction of a building, henceforth, a use variance was sought for that use, is that accurate to say?
Uh, yes, so that application was filed with the Board of Adjustment, and, uh, I testified on, on two dates there, on September 14th of 2000 and October 12th of 2000, and I identified, uh, two D variances, there was, what was going on there is that the pathmark space in the main b-building was being vacated by pathmarks, and the developer was building a new, uh, building for pathmark toward the rear portion of the site, as well as an additional retail space next to the pathmark space. And indeed, um, in that development, um, the building did, uh, um, extend into the R5 zone, so that, that it, it was clear that a building was proposed at that time in the R5 zone, and, uh, the applicant was proposing a detention basin, uh, in the R5 zone. So that was the basis that I testified that there were D variances involved. I note parenthetically, uh, reading the resolution that, um, it was certainly recognized by the planner, uh, the West Orange Planner at that time, that a D variance was triggered by the building being in the R5 zone, and there were two other dis-D variances cited in the resolution, having to do with the additional signs, um, and, and it's my own opinion that, that they were not D variances, when you have an accessory structure, uh, it, it doesn't really trigger a D variance, but in any event, uh, that, that application was, in my opinion, properly before the Board of Adjustment, uh, and, and I testified as, uh, that the D variances were granted, a-and that was, uh, on the primarily on the basis that the R5 zone would unlikely be developed for single-family houses because of wetlands in the back, you, you, the wet, the houses would have to be accessed through the parking lot of the shopping center, which in my opinion was, uh, kind of an extreme hardship, it was, uh, impractical to use the R5 zone in, in that fashion, so that was the basis at that time that I, uh, thought that the D variance, uh, it was justified.
All right, so do you feel, based upon your testimony this evening, that you have thoroughly corrected uh, your misstatement from the prior hearing?
Um, yes, it basically is that I, I wasn't aware that that uh, approval was never constructed, and so I had, I falsely assumed that was what was out there today was as a result of that approval. Um, so, and, and again, the only thing I had going for me at the last meeting is I was shown part of a resolution that, uh, appears to be misidentified as a 2004 resolution, whereas, uh, the resolution of approval was, um, much earlier.
Right, and at the year 2000 application, the two... at the year 2000 application, the two hearing days at which you testified, you had a counterpart professional planner who was representing objectors. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. There was an objecting planner who represented the Paddock Farms subdivision that had been approved at the time, but I believe the houses had not been built.
And who was that planner?
Uh, that was John McDonough that was uh objecting to the application.
And he's the same planner who is now representing the, or testifying on behalf of the applicant? Is that right?
That's correct.
Now, Mister Stack, in terms of planning considerations, have there been any relevant changes since your 2000 testimony based upon your review of the transcripts and your review of the plans?
Um, yes, I think there were two significant changes. Um, at, at the time of that approval, um, there were no homes built yet uh to the north on the so-called Paddock Farm subdivision. Uh, and obviously that subdivision is fully developed now, and, and some of the homes at the end of Terrace Avenue are fairly close to the subject property and, and close to buildings uh A and B that are backing up to them. Uh, the other issue is that uh that was, I believe, under a 19, uh, let's see, 89 master plan. There's a, there was a new master plan um in uh 2019. And that p- plan, wh- whereas the prior master plan recommended an, an OR zone for the properties to the north. Uh, the current master plan recommends an R six zone, so that, that's a change in public policy. And, and also somewhat uh curious, the 2019 current master plan has a land use map that's color-coded showing existing land uses. And uh oddly enough, the entire property that's the subject of this application, including both the R five zone and the PC zone are all colored in red. So the, the uh the authors of that plan that apparently include Mister Greigle uh considered the entire property in commercial use in, in uh 2019.
Alright, I have no other questions of Mister Stack. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, Mister Mees, do you have anything to say?
Uh, again, just one question, Mister Stack. Uh, sorry if it's repetitive to what Mister Greigle asked. But in that prior application, there was a use variance because the building was actually being placed in the residential zone. Is that correct?
Um, well, in my opinion, there was a use variance because there were drainage facilities and a building that were placed in the um in the R five zone.
And, and there are no buildings proposed in the R five zone in this application.
Uh, there are no physical changes, although as I mentioned, it's used for drainage and used for the calculation as if the entire property were in the PC zone.
Is there any modification to the stream in which this drains to?
Um, none that is, is proposed, but there is a, the plans show a culvert that uh empty the stormwater uh without detention into the back portion of the property.
And, and how far would you carry that through this stream? All the way to the sea?
Uh, I didn't follow the stream, so I'm not sure where it is, and I don't think that's relevant.
No, I don't think it's relevant either, but you, you did indicate that you thought it was relevant.
Well, it's relevant that that property is used as for depositing stormwater drain, drainage uh from the subject property.
Uh, a- as it has, and it's an existing stream, as it has for the last 50 years or so.
Um, I wasn't here 50 years ago, so I don't know.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mister Stack.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna go to public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, the public, you have the opportunity now to make comments on the application.
Wait, don't you want to hear from our planner and?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right. Mister Greigle, we'll do that before, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. And just um, it's been a lo- long road for this application. The boards uh have seen it been modified over time. We have never hearing, so it'll be useful just to kind of step back uh a bit to go through what's being proposed, what the board's considering uh for its review. Uh, the application is actually filed back in 2020 originally. Uh, didn't come before this board for some time after that, but it was actually reviewed, uh, I believe, on multiple occasions by the Site Plan Review Advisory Board. Uh, as it's a major site plan, that board consists of members of the Planning Board, Zoning Board, uh, other township officials, including myself, uh, the board engineer, uh, and others, representatives of pedestrian safety, for example, uh, who vetted the original plans and made suggestions. And so over the course of that time since late 2020, this application has evolved significantly, including throughout the public hearing process. So uh, there had been some concerns raised early on that I happen to say, you know, ones I've raised and others on that board raised that have been addressed, including with regard to pedestrian safety, uh connectivity, et cetera. That's been addressed even further from comments from that, uh, the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Uh, in addition, you know, certain other changes, we got the landscaping, the islands and such have been modified as we've heard public comment uh and questions and board uh concerns and questions over the course of the application. So I just put that out there as far as background that this is certainly, again, been going on for some time. And the applicants now seeking to finally, you know, pull together and ask for a vote on the application. Uh, just in terms of, for the record, permitted use in the zone, in the uh planned commercial zone, that's what's being proposed here. Uh, there's no changes proposed, as we've heard, in the R five zone in terms of new buildings and additional uses or anything along those lines. Uh, so that's, uh, this board has jurisdiction based upon that. Uh, the applicant is requesting variances. These are classified as C variances. They are listed in my review. Uh, I can I will read through all of them. There's a number of them. We've heard testimony from Mister McDonough regarding them and critique from the uh objectors planner regarding them as well. Uh, but these are all, in my opinion, classified as C variances. That's how it's been since the outset uh of this process. That's the zoning officials determination, and that's where we are. Um, as far as those variances, again, there's a, a list that includes what we've heard about building coverage, a lot coverage, or some setbacks, uh signage. Um, we've got the parking. Again, I don't want to belabor the point, but read through all these, the drive-through window, uh, drive-up window, excuse me. Uh, I will note parenthetically on that, that the ordinance was amended in the past few years uh to allow for this change, actually in 2020, to allow for drive-up windows to make them uh permissible in more locations and in more settings within the township. The master plan in 2019 actually recommended this change. So it provides for uh supplemental standards for non-residential districts, including accessory, as accessory uses for banks, restaurants, fast food, restaurants, pharmacies, and similar retail uses. Um, so these are standards that the applicant uh has to either comply with or can request a variance from them, but they are clearly, in my opinion, C, C variances. That is, they're not conditional use standards or anything that would trigger a D variance for non-compliance with them. Uh, just a few other points with regard to the overall application. Uh, I think it's useful to consider that this pro- this property's been developed for some time. In the master plan documents, we have heard a bit of discussion of master planning in the township uh in over the years, this property and the Essex Green Shopping Center have been discussed as needing some improvements. Essex Green had, was approved a few years back. It is undergoing some modifications currently. This center has had minor changes in recent years, mostly for tenant upgrades and additional uses being added and things being modified here and there. But um there were, going back in my tenure at least, I'd been involved in the township since 2009, uh, in preparing for that 2010 master plan update. There was a lot of discussion uh with regards to this particular property and trying to improve it. It was a desire at that time, as well as in the 2019 master plan update, uh, to improve this center in terms of a number of things, including its aesthetics, in terms of pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, uh, the parking lot design. I'll actually read real quickly a quote uh from, just looking this up before, from the 2010 master plan update. Page 94, it talking about circulation in the township. Uh, large, larger shopping centers present their own challenges. According to the West Orange Police Department, the Essex Green and Whole Foods shopping centers are responsible for half of all pedestrian slash auto accidents in the township. Accidents in these developments are often due to drivers cutting across rows of empty parking lanes, which points to a solution involving changes in parking lot design. These could range from uh from stop signs and crosswalks in front of store entrances to the addition of planted islands, narrowed aisles, and speed humps in some locations. The land use regulations ordinance should include revisions to zoning for these areas, including mandating properties make such changes as part of any future development application approvals. Uh, the ordinance has not been changed to do that, but um this applicant is proposing to ameliorate that situation at this particular center uh by providing for, you know, access and parking layout that would address some of those concerns this master plan document raised. Uh, in addition, again, there's been a focus on pedestrian safety. I've already mentioned that, but uh in our review, you know, I personally was, you know, pushing for certain things such as sidewalks along all frontages, the pedestrian safety board as well, uh, removing the so-called slip ramp along Prospect Avenue uh from a safety point of view that frankly, get cars in faster. It's a, in my opinion, as a planner, a less desirable approach than actually having a s- a centralized access point to provide, you know, vehicle access to the property versus letting people speed in, you know, getting bypass traffic to speed into the center. Uh, instead, we're proposing to have connections throughout the property, connections along the exterior frontages. Um, you know, you name it, a whole bunch of other changes that were asked for and by the pedestrian safety board and provided by the applicant. Uh, just a couple of other thoughts um for the board's consideration to get to follow up on some of the testimony you've heard from both the applicant and the objectors uh professionals. Um, with regard to the coverage, again, my reading of the ordinance, the, the land use regulations ordinance of West Orange does not distinguish between zones. Um, the, the definition in fact says lot coverage shall mean that portion of a lot, which is covered by parking areas, et cetera. Um, it talks about a lot, so you don't, you don't break out the different portions of a lot when doing that type of calculation. Just a few um final points. I, sorry for going on too long, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure there's a number of things here I could, you know, go into for the board's consideration uh as well as for the public. Um, and I'd be happy to answer questions as well. The, with regard to a second, just wanna make sure, yeah, I'm checking all my notes here, make sure I don't miss anything. Um, the current conditions on the property, again, just to point out, there's been discussion about, you know, what's visible from the passing street and for motorists or folks at the, you know, the reservation across the street. Um, this is a commercial zone. Commercial zones permit parking lots. Right now, you have a very large parking lot that is identified as being an unsafe condition. Previously, the applicant's proposing to add in landscaping and islands and better circulation within there. Uh, buildings along the street frontage, again, the applicant needs to demonstrate it could get a variance for them given their location, uh, but they would actually, again, maybe shield the parking lot area from view compared to current conditions. But again, I, I point out, whatever is across the street or adjacent, this is a commercial zone. The township's clear land use intention is for commercial uses on this property. Uh, with regard to some other topics, with regard to sustainability, um, it's, the applicant has made a number of proposals to address that, those issues. I just would note that it's, it's great, the proposing these types of things, the board's asking for them, the public's asking for them. The land use regulations ordinance does not require things such as cool pavement or solar panels. Uh, it's great that an applicant will, you know, listen to the request, but there's nothing to mandate that. Uh, you know, frankly, we put a sustainability checklist in the ordinance a number of years back as a more to raise awareness. If there's nothing mandatory other than it needs to be filled out, an applicant can say, I'm doing nothing. In this case, the applicant is proposing a number of items that would address that. I believe that covers all the uh main points I had at this point. So Mister Chairman, unless you have other, or you are the board of other questions, um, that completes my presentation.
Good, thank you. Mister Hess.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. The uh, I, I agree with Mister Greigle. Since the beginning of the project, the applicant has made extensive changes to the plan. I think what's proposed now is a, is a big improvement for what's existing. Uh, there's with the landscape islands and control of the traffic circulation at the site, the additional landscaping are all tremendous improvements. Um, also, I'll note that the uh, and I'll note that uh in reviewing the parking calculations, i- it's my opinion that more the parking that's proposed at the site will be more than adequate for the proposed uses. Uh, I'll also note that the uh township forester, Mister Kip, has recently issued a memo reviewing the latest plans, and he fully supports the landscaping and says that, notes that the applicant has not only met, but has in many cases exceeded the uh ordinance requirements. So I, I think we have a plan that's much improved from what first became, first came before the board uh when we had the uh original sprab meeting.
Mister Hess, can you talk about the signs? There were uh a couple of large signs that the public brought out, and in relation to the signs at Essex Green.
Well, I think in terms of the signs, the uh uh with a shopping center, the size that exists, uh, I think my own opinion is I think the signs are appropriate. Uh, Essex Greens, they had replaced some of the older signs with newer signs that were gonna have changeable copy, so they were upgrading the size, but they were also fairly large signs uh proposed at the side of Essex Green also.
Right, we had discussed that the signs, I think, the last meeting, that the signs at Essex Green were 220 square feet, and I believe the applicant will uh agree with 220 square feet for the two, for two signs and 260 square feet for one sign, and the largest sign of 320 square feet, which was uh spoken, spoken about by a couple of members of the public, will be removed. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll have to get the applicant to discuss that. Um, do you have anything else to say about the site, Mister Hess?
I, I do not. I, I think uh Mister Greigle's uh report to the board really summarized um everything that's happened. And, and I agree with what he said.
Okay, um, one moment. Okay, so um Mister Mees, I just want to get you in here. As the applicant's attorney, you heard about the signage. Does the applicant agree to, does that make sense to the applicant? Agree to those numbers?
Uh, Mister Chairman, you broke up a little bit while you were.
I'm sorry. We, we spoke about the uh, the two sign, the signs at Essex Green are 220 square feet, so you'll have two signs of 220 square feet and one sign of 260 square feet, and the sign of 320 square feet goes away. To be more in con- in concert with Essex Green, and you will get the largest sign of 260 square feet.
Alright, it, it's still the three, three pylon signs.
Correct.
Two, two on Prospect, one on Eagle Rock.
Two 20, two 20, and two 60.
I, I think the applicant will live with it.
Okay, and then uh Mister Hess spoke about uh the foresters' report. Is there any irrigation along uh Prospect Avenue?
Uh, there actually is irrigation that was installed, I want to say about a year or so ago, along Prospect.
Okay, and is the applicant going to increase the amount of uh evergreens along Prospect Avenue from the uh the Tire Store to Verizon Store?
Uh, as indicated by Mister Welsh, I think back in September, we are proposing landscaping uh to be supplemented in front of building C and D um to buffer the view of the uh dumpster and, and drive-through with those locations.
Will the applicant go from the uh landscaping all across to be uh uh approximately five to eight feet high uh bushes that will uh give the uh, the view of a, a green pathway, more so to mimic what's on the other side of the road, and it will, it will be uh w- watered by your beautiful uh underground irrigation system.
This is
Yes, go ahead.
You, you broke up a little bit, uh, and I would say that that would actually be too tall. There, there's, there should be some visibility of the center through that a- area. From the, from motorists, I, I think of if I could, I, I think the applicant would agree to install some supplemental low, low plantings, low shrubs uh along Prospect. Right now, there's uh, there's groupings by the main driveways uh in buildings, and there's also trees along the entire front. And I think the applicant would agree to supplement that with some low uh low plantings to buffer the view of the cars, but I think the applicant wants to make sure that there is view of the, of the signage in the buildings.
Absolutely, absolutely. Cause as you said, to buffer the view of the cars, so whatever that's gonna take in concert with the uh, the forester.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that's five to eight feet tall. I think that'd be more like a, a, a two to maybe a, a, a two to maybe three foot tall shrub along that area.
You guys get together, this is out of my scope of expertise. So from Mavis Tire to Verizon Store, it will be a nice visage uh along a greenway.
Well, there, there will be areas that'll be maintained as lawn as well, not just all
You and the, the forester will get together. Okay, that sounds like a very nice thing. Okay, uh, Ms. McGovern, have I missed anybody? Can we go to public comment?
Sorry, I'm muted. Um, I'm just looking at my notes. Hold on one second.
Okay.
Oh, I think there was a comment, uh, there was something about the foresters' report about a yearly, I, when I reviewed that, that's not something the MLU L will require, so.
So, Mr. Meese, um, what can we agree to with the uh the uh, the uh, the applicant will maintain all greenery trees in the uh parking lot and the periphery in perpetuity. Once a year, the uh, the zoning official will make a spot check and discuss that with the applicant if need be. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it's, that, that's the way it should be. The, the, it should be the zoning officer, the town should do that, or the forester should do that. If there's any, any need for improvement, he should then contact the applicant to point out what's maybe uh, you know, some vegetation that has died or needs to be trimmed or whatever.
Okay, so just, just to be clear then, um, everything in the foresters' report, with the exception of um that second to last paragraph needs the, just the yearly report, it will, will uh, I'll, I'll add something in the um resolution about that.
The zoning official will uh speak to the applicant if, if uh there are areas that need to be uh corrected.
Okay, and um, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, just one other thing in, in that report, um, he, he mentions the pollinator gardens. I just want to make sure that we're talking the same thing. I think we are. There's several planted islands that as Mr. Welsh testified to, there were trees, there were shrubs, there were perennials mixed in. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming that's what he's referring to and not something new and different that hasn't been shown on the plans.
That sounds reasonable. The board will deliberate on that, but uh, i- i- and you can work that out with the forester. The applicant will work that with the forester. Okay, I think we're up to public comment, Ms. Mc- uh McGovern?
Yes.
Okay, do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. And the uh, the ground rules are, it has to be something that you feel about this application that the board has not previously heard that would help the board in making a decision. And you have three minutes uh from when you start speaking. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Ron Weston, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, uh Ronald Weston, forty-two Whitbay Drive, West Orange. I'm here offering my comments as a resident and taxpayer for the past thirty-eight years, well as a current member of the West Orange Economic Development Commission, where projects like this one are talked about regularly. That's very important for the, for the economic viability as well as the quality of our community, quality of life. I want to thank the planning board members for your service, having served for many years uh on the planning board and for your diligence through uh and thorough consideration of this application that has been under review for many months. Uh, I strongly advocate that the board approve the West Orange Plaza application um uh as presented over, over the many months, including tonight, with reasonable conit- uh, conditions as your professionals and the board appropriate. I believe the record has shown that the applicant has demonstrated the benefits of the requested variances clearly outweigh the detriments and the board can find accordingly, and that some of the um whatever, uh, uh nitpicking, if you will, planning arguments uh that, that have been presented, Mr. Steck. Um, um, as, as much as, um, again, your professionals have, have um pointed out that those are not actually, uh, they don't agree with those. Um, and that those really don't paint the big picture. West Orange Plaza has been a major shopping center in the township for many, many decades. It clearly needs investment and modernization, and this application uh, and these owners have proposed improvements that will benefit the residents and taxpayers of the town. At a time when commercial and real estate sector uh properties like this uh are under stress and struggling, many retailers have closed stores that serve residents and support our tax base. Um, here, we have a Whole Foods anchor store that I think most would agree was a great addition. And now we have the potential of a Target store to come in. It is a no-brainer that the proposed improvements to this property are necessary to attract and retain quality retail tenants uh for our residents and for the community. I ask the board members to vote yes with, again, with reasonable conditions on this application tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. uh Weston. Do any other members of the public have any comment? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Phil, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Philip Litwinoff. I live in Lyndon, Lyndon Avenue in West Orange. Um, first of all, I will say that I completely endorse the concept behind Target taking over this shopping center. We need it, we need it for the taxes. I'm sure Mayor McCartney would agree with. However, there are still some restrictions that I believe the planning board should impose. Mr. Meese had repeatedly said he understood that there are to be no fast food restaurants in this area. And while Mr. Greigl spoke about no zoning differences between the township, our, our rules really do have sections set up as uh as specifically applicable to this property. Um, since, as Mr. Meese repeatedly said, no, he understands no fast food restaurants, I suggest that the planning board in its approval or in its uh a decision as to what to approve, specifically prohibit the usage of fast food drive-through restaurants on this property. Next item, signage. Again, Mr. Greigl said that, you know, made his report that he thought that the signage was appropriate for the size of this property, and it is commercial. It is commercial. However, if you look, if the planning board ever looked at what's in the Milburn Shopping Center, which is also commercial, you will see similar signage, much smaller. And there are no residents around there. There is a funeral home, there is a shot, a uh, a beauty parlor. There is a uh, a retina center, and that's it. And if you go a little further onto the Vauxhall, onto Springfield Avenue in Vauxhall, a propping center that has a, guess what, a Whole Foods and a Target has a much smaller signage than what's being proposed here. So I would suggest that the signage be further restricted from what you guys spoke about. Last item, shrubbery along Prospect Avenue. Again, Mr. Meese argued, I believe it sounded like he argued, about the size of the, the shrubbery to conceal some of the uh the property. If you go a little bit further south to where Essex Green Shopping Center is, you will go along where the drive-through restaurant to us, to the Starbucks is, and you will not see the drive-in lane because the shrubbery is at least five or six feet high. I would suggest the planning board put a similar restriction as to what goes on to this new shopping center so that you have the same visibility restrictions for the drivers coming south on Prospect Avenue. Thank you for, for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Litwinoff, uh, do any other members of the public have any comments? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Joyce, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, uh Chairman and uh members of the board. My name is Joyce Rudin, and I live on Woodland Avenue. I live around the corner from this development, and like everybody else, I had hoped for the best. My vision for this project was a green dream with real sustainable planning, LE, L, uh, led weed-certified buildings and materials, lots of trees, huge pollinator gardens, unique shopping, water features which allow runoff to stay on the property, solar paneling that could pay for the lighting, extensive charging stations, New Jersey and the country move towards full electric vehicles, permeable surfaces, and even land conservation. All very doable, but that doesn't seem to be in the works from what I'm hearing tonight. What we have here will snarl traffic even more than it already has at Prospect and Eagle Rock, which is the most dangerous intersection in West Orange and one of the most dangerous in Essex County. This is especially disappointing since just last night, the mayor, who will be voting on this project tonight, introduced a resolution to the council for a town-wide sustainability plan. The council, led by Tammy Williams, also on this board, approved it. That resolution included all of the features I just described. What it said is poor land use decisions can lead to an increased societal ills such as decreased mobility, high housing costs, increased greenhouse gas emissions, loss of open space, and the degradation of natural resources, unquote. I guess when it comes to actually making it happen, not just writing fluff for grant eligibility, it's back to sprawl, pollution, and congestion. This could be a beautiful revenue generating project with forward-thinking design. But this appears to be the same old, same old West Orange mediocrity, status quo, and pandering to developers that has characterized West Orange, failing to live up to the commitment of innovation in the town of Edison. And are we so desperate that we choose to abandon standards and measures that were put in place to assure our quality of life? Instead of the vision, we are looking at two fast food drive-throughs in the front of the property, and that's what they are, no matter what you call them. Enormous high signs that shout out at a lack of aesthetics and taste and the bare minimum in, in terms of trees, plantings, and gardens. It does not show respect for our residents. So before this goes forward, I have three simple asks to mitigate the damage from this massive overbuild. I am asking this for myself and my family, but also for many of my neighbors that I spoke with who do not normally interface with planning boards but who share my concerns. Please of Mavis. It is not a safety hazard. Put plantings in the front grass strip to make it more appealing. This simple road eases traffic. Without it, my neighbors and I fear that we will not be able to get out of West Woodland Avenue as traffic may back up beyond the mayor down to the golf course on Prospect Avenue. This is what happens on the other side of Prospect where traffic is backed up past two eighty while cars wait at the light. If you don't live right here, you may not realize that it can take twenty minutes to go from Woodland Avenue to the two eighty ramp. Leaving the slip road is a small ask that will reduce some of the volume. Secondly, please don't grant variances for enormous unsightly and most definitely unneeded signs that are so high and out of sync with the surrounding area. They should be in scale with the sign on the corner of the reservation. Finally, as the zoning board stated when this site was evaluated in two thousand, say no to dri- drive-through restaurants. This will only exacerbate the massive congestion getting into the plaza with and within the plaza that's expected from a Target, which is also a fulfillment center. I would appreciate if these small accommodations for the residents of Redwood Area, Paddock Farms, and behind the Manor community were granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rudin. Do any other members of the public have any comments for the planning board? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Erica, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Erica Frampton, Stanley Road.
Go ahead.
Okay, um. Even the Joyce's dog had something to say about it, which was pretty good. Um, yeah, I'm pretty much on the same page as the last caller. Um, I grew up around the corner from the shopping center. I've seen it fully developed in the seventies and the traffic was crazy back then, and there were half as many cars, maybe not half, but there was a lot less cars on the road than there is now. Um, Target is great, go for it, but the, my, my problems with the situation is um the slip road. Um, if the slip road isn't there, the traffic, like Joyce said, will be backed up past the Manor. I've experienced this just driving home from work, working in Bergen County where I've sat on Prospect Avenue from the Accurate Dealership to Woodland Avenue for over twenty minutes um at four thirty in the afternoon, so. And that was like on a daily basis, so it's pretty bad. Also, I think there should definitely be a sidewalk on Prospect Avenue. Um, there is so much traffic, uh, walking traffic. Um, people walk from their, our neighborhood to Whole Foods or wherever else they're going in that shopping center. And um, I do have an issue with fast food as well, and if it wasn't a fast food restaurant, why was there a window and a menu um drawn on the outside of the building? Is that just for representation of a restaurant? Um, like in an architectural type of drawing, because I don't understand why that had to be added if it's not fast food, and nobody is actually committed to the fact that it's not fast food. You guys just say you don't know. Well, how can you like approve something if you don't know? I don't know. Doesn't seem logical to me. And um, I'm also bothered by the lighting because light pollution is a real thing. And there have been studies showing how light pollution has an effect on migratory birds. We have um forty, four hundred acres in on the reservation. We have Verona Park um a couple miles away. We have the reservoir on Northfield by Turtleback Zoo, which is maybe five miles away. And Vincent's Pond, which is a couple of miles away. I'm sure there's other places that have large bodies of water or water where ducks and other waterfowl migrate to. And that's pretty much it. I thank you for allowing me to speak. And I hope this works out for everybody and makes the town a better place.
Thank you very much for your comment. And uh one thing, Mr. Meese, uh, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Uh, will there not be a uh, a uh, uh, walking path all along Prospect Avenue?
Yes, there's a new sidewalk proposed all along Prospect Avenue.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that addition. I thought that was in the record already. I just want to make sure it was clear to people who thought it wasn't.
And how many, and how many electric vehicle charging stations are there?
I don't know the number, but I think we exceed the uh, the requirements. I
Almost fifty, I thought I counted, forty-six, I'm gonna guess. Okay.
Forty-eight or something?
Yeah, they, um, there was testimony that they exceed the number that's required, but let, uh, what, we'll, we'll continue. I just want to interject that. Um. Do any other members of the public have any comments uh for the planning board? Please raise your hand and be identified.
There's a few more. Uh, Sally, please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. There are solid financial benefits to acting on the public's recommendations. Shoppers will like you, and they'll spend more money when you provide them with natural features, especially in parking lots. A place that people dread. There's a study called Strip Mall, City Trees, and Community Values uh published in two thousand and nine, and I quote, consumers report being willing to pay nine to twelve percent more for goods and services in districts having a mature tree canopy. They will also travel greater distance and spend a longer time to visit a shopping center having high-quality trees. So it is to the applicant's financial benefit to take these actions. The planner and architect claim it's an upscale shopping center. So eliminating the two fast food drive-through restaurants will make this true. Drive-throughs are not allowed in this PC zone. Please put a conservation easement on the ten acres of R-five zone forest behind the building. Make your calculations honest. The applicant has limited compliance with our township's sustainability checklist form. They should have a construction waste management plan. They should have irrigation systems that they actually promised within the form, but then reneged on during the hearings. They should have solar panels on all the buildings. I don't agree that the forester supports this landscaping plan. Uh, the traffic expert said there are an extra two hundred and fifty parking spaces. The forester wants these utilized for bioswales otherwise known as rain gardens to prevent dirty stormwater from running directly from this parking lot into the Peckman River. The forester also requested more screening along Prospect Avenue, and the two-foot-tall shrubs mentioned this evening are too small. It should also be committed to no use of pesticides. The permeable pavement was rejected. That should not be optional. It should be mandated. be optional. It should be mandatory. Excessive signage throughout the place is tacky. So we need signage that looks beautiful. In conclusion, let's make this project, instead of less bad, more good. The shopping center can be smarter with financial benefit to both the owners and the township. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public have any comments for the planning board? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Terry, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening again, Terry Trixgills. I'm pleased that Target is coming in. As I said, I live in Crystal Woods, which is right off of Blackburn there by Eagle Rock. The traffic in that area, in this area, is ridiculous now with CVS, with entrances on Prospect and Wood Hall. In addition to bringing in more traffic with Target, I just don't know if the township is working with the county and trying to figure out how traffic can be handled more efficiently at Prospect and Eagle Rock. I see near misses every day as I'm traveling from my home headed down towards Chit Chat as people drift over into other lanes. Something has to be done. I've spoken about this numerous times with the town council, and I don't know that the county has responded. I do believe that the developer has conducted a traffic study, but I would imagine that that traffic study was in the best interest of the developer. I think it would behoove the township and the county to do their own traffic study to figure out how to keep pedestrians safe and how to keep the vehicular traffic in a space where we are not seeing so many potential accidents. And I'm just wondering if the planning board is truly going to approve this project without knowing exactly what's going in these other buildings. I don't understand how you could do that without knowing exactly what you're approving. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any comments for the planning board?
Mosh, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Moshe Rudin, live on Woodland Avenue. I just wanted to say that I am disappointed by this process regarding the arrival of Target. We all won a good place to shop, but we've never had a fulfillment center, as far as I know, in West Orange. And really, we have no idea of the volume of traffic, of out-of-town traffic. I just heard that an Oprah release showed over 200 car crashes in the last three years where things, as they are, without a fulfillment center, which who knows what is that, how much that's going to bring through? And multiple fast food drive-throughs and how this is going to impact the adjacent neighborhoods like Woodland, where I live. As far as I can tell, unfortunately, this seems like another Adventures in Runaway Development, just like we have done over and over, Executive Drive, Essex Green, and too many other examples in West Orange. Let's give approval, grant every variance, and see what happens. What could go wrong? I do not feel that the board has taken environmental sprawl and traffic considerations and concerns seriously. Virtually, the only thing I've ever said at any of these meetings comes down to the same thing. Where is the consideration for the character of our community, the quality of our life, the environmental and physical safety of our residents? The historical nature of the township is a place of peaceful, multi-generational residence, residents. Value is not just defined by corporate capitulations, and the value of a community is more than how much we allow our resources, space, and roads to be harnessed for profit. Once upon a time, our township had character. I would like to think that creating a classy, distinctive, and beautiful place of commerce would be a priority instead of another generic sprawling strip mall filled with lines of idling cars. I urge you to reconsider the drive-throughs, removing the slip road, and the dearth of green space. Thank you.
Thank you. The member of the public have any comments?
Kevin, please state your name and address for the record. Kevin Malanga, you have your hands raised?
I do have my hand raised, yes. Shall I speak now, Chairman Bagos, or should we? Thank you. Members of the board, Chairman Bagos. Good evening. Thank you for your close attention to this application through all these hearings. It's greatly appreciated. A 19th century French literary critic once wrote, plus ça change, plus c'est la même chose. What we now know as the more things change, the more they stay the same. So it goes with West Orange Plaza. In the year 2000, the owner of the property applied for a large expansion of that shopping center that at the time was anchored by a Pathmark supermarket. Basically, that application proposed a new Pathmark to the north of the existing building and a pad restaurant in the middle of the parking lot. But practically, every member of the zoning board opposed that pad restaurant. Mrs. Alice Weiss, who's presently on the zoning board and was on the zoning board in the year 2000, said, "I think that you can still do the back part," meaning the new Pathmark, "but it's overkill with the restaurant that brings in 1,000 more cars. That adds to the quarter of an F situation. I don't see that it has to go with this." So the transcription is a little bit truncated, but I think the idea is she didn't like the pad restaurant. Neither did the other members of the board, and that pad restaurant was removed from the application. Now, what is interesting reading is that, and Mr. Greigle confirmed it, is that for many years, the township of West Orange has sought to improve this property, has beseeched the owner to make improvements, and they've been ignored. So what has happened to the shopping center in the intervening 23 years? Nothing. West Orange Plaza is the most deplorable retail property in the township, and the owners now wish to be rewarded for the neglect of that property and their disdain of the residents of West Orange by being granted site plan approval. I have no objection to the improvements of the shopping center, but this board does not have jurisdiction to hear this application. And as has been expressed by Mrs. Stec, this matter belongs before the zoning board for use variance. While not all conceding the issue of jurisdiction, as for the merits of the application, the shopping center is touted as an upscale shopping center. However, the first structure a visitor will see when entering the shopping center from Prospect Avenue is the back wall of a restaurant, be it a fast food restaurant or something else, and a line of cars snaking around the building. That's what the visitors will first see. This is supposed to be an upscale shopping center? That's not upscale. That's downscale. There is no way that the success of this shopping center hinges on a fast food restaurant in the middle of the parking lot. The demand of this applicant, what the zoning board demanded and received 23 years ago, the removal of the pad restaurant. During my cross-examination of the applicant's traffic engineer, you heard testimony that there is a parking surplus of more than 200 spaces. Those spaces can be used for more planting islands. Reduce the number of parking spaces and replace them with more planted islands, I respectfully submit. Lastly, a conservation easement should be implemented on the residential area so that no further development ever takes place in that area. And one final thing. The public should receive some sort of published notice whenever plans are going to be submitted for any type of restaurant that's going to be constructed at this site so that the public has an opportunity to review the plans and see what in fact is going to be put there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any comment for the planning board? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I do not see any hands at this time.
That will close public comment. I'd like to make one more comment. Jean Baptiste Alphonse, I happen to know that quote. And the portion that he left out was that even the most turbulent of changes do not affect the reality on a deeper level other than to cement the status quo. So even these changes will cement the status quo. Things stay the same. So all the bad things that we hear, all the good things, may come to fruition, but we have to work together through the efforts of the planning board, the public, which has greatly provided information, confirmation that we do listen and that the applicant listens to the board and has made changes along the way. Mr. Meese, I think it's time for you to sum up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will try to be very brief. First, I want to thank the board, the public, the board's professionals. This has been a thorough review of the application, and we sincerely do appreciate all of your inputs. And I think the recognition of that is the fact that the plan has in fact changed with that input during the application process. Your views have not been ignored, your suggestions have not been ignored, and the project is better a result of it. But I must say, the project was very good when it was first introduced. And it was a team effort by the owners of the West Orange Plaza, by Mike Petrie and Sean Delaney, by John Montoro and his architectural staff, by Jim Welsh and his landscape architectural staff, and Gary Dean, the traffic engineer. The initial submission was well-considered, but it's gotten better. It got better as a result of your input. It got better as a result of the input of the Site Plan Review Advisory Board, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Mr. Hess, Mr. Greigle, Mr. Kip. All of you contributed to a better project, as has the public. And with respect to sustainability, the project has incorporated a lot of new sustainability efforts into the design. The landscape islands, the landscaping along the perimeter, the white roofs, the LED lighting. Mr. Montoro in the design of the buildings themselves with the canopies in the front of the buildings, not only to add architectural interest and aesthetic beauty, but also to direct sunlight away from the building, so use less energy. The water-saving features Mr. Montoro talked about within the buildings, the drainage design. And in fact, one of the comments earlier by Mr. Stec, "There's actually less water going off-site than there is today," as testified to by Mr. Delaney with respect to this project, given all of the green that's been added to the site. We've added 48, that's the number, 48 EV parking spaces, more than is required. There's also sanitary sewer improvements to the site. So the project not only is a significant improvement to the center, it's a significant improvement to the township of West Orange. There's pedestrian safety and circulation improvements. There's vehicular safety, the circulation improvements, a vast aesthetic improvement. And also, the center has a sense of place for community involvement, for a place for the community to come to shop. There's outdoor seating areas, there's gathering spaces. This is a vast improvement. And with respect to the variances and the parking and the landscaping, as testified to by several of the witnesses, the applicant has struck the right balance. There's a variance required for parking. We recognize that, but we're trying to find that balance with sufficient parking for the center without too much parking, so we can have the green islands. And now there's green islands throughout the shopping center. And as testified to by Mr. McDonough, "The board must look at this project as a whole and not count individual variances. And although each individual variance has been justified, I would submit that this is one of those rare projects where on balance, it is crystal clear that the public good is advanced if this project is improved." You know, I started this application several months ago with the comment that it's very rare for a land use attorney to present a project to a board that we know is a great project. Well, this is one of those. This is one of those rare projects that is going to be an improvement to the community. There's opportunities here for jobs. There's opportunities here for shopping. And in totality, the project advances several purposes of zoning and the public good, and certainly not just advantageous to the property owner. This is a very good project, and we appreciate all of your input, and we ask that you please vote in favor of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so it's time for the board to deliberate. So I'm going to ask each member, do you have any questions or statements about the application that we can share with each other? Vice Chairman Wilks?
No, no additional questions.
Okay. Ma'am McCartney?
Chairman, I believe that all of the recommendations that we have made have been addressed. So I do not have anything additional to it.
Thank you. Council President Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I just again want to thank the applicant for his consideration for all of your improvements, as well as your update to the requests that we have made. And as a gentle reminder, I do understand that we could not make that a condition, but I do want to put as a reminder, because the applicant is bringing a tremendous amount of employment opportunities to our municipality, that certainly they remain considerate of our township, township residents as employees. And other than that, again, thank you for coming to West Orange and your consideration, your efforts. We look forward to the vote.
Mr. Albert? You muted?
God sakes. Sorry about that. I just want to thank the applicants, the witnesses, the members of the public. I think that over the numerous meetings we've had on this, I think we've seen a lot of really positive changes to this. The one thing I want to make sure that gets included eventually in a resolution is the Forester memo from yesterday, or I guess the day before is the date on it, that the things that it says in there that have been agreed to, including pollinator gardens, that they get, you know, added into the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Klein? Yeah, Mr. Klein, go back to Mr. Green.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a little bit of a concern about Building C. It's, I understand, and I'm looking at the site plan right now, and I see how the parking sort of lays out with Building A has some in the back lower section and in front of it, and B's got a bunch in front by Mavis. And then you've got this section in front of Target, and a section in front of Whole Foods, and then it wraps down, and it's for Building D is the stuff that's out by Prospect. Just a little concerned that that Building C is going to be in a spot where people may have to end up parking. So I don't know. I just was wondering if there's a way that they could phase that in, if they could build A, build B, build D, do the improvements to everything else, and then wait and do C and see how it, how everything comes out, just to see that there isn't going to be a problem. I understand our parking requirements are a little higher than ITE numbers and all the other stuff, so I don't know. I just have a little bit of concern with that. But other than that, I looked, listening to the traffic engineer from the last meeting, I listened to all that. They're making the improvements that I really was hoping that they would be doing at the Eagle Rock Avenue driveway, that double lane and the right lane coming out. I think that's going to be a tremendous improvement. And then containing the parking, so pedestrians are funneled to crosswalks. Again, I think that's another great improvement. I like the landscaping. I would have liked, and I can't remember seeing what the sign's going to look like from Prospect or from Eagle Rock, to see how everybody says it's so big. I don't know. I can't tell what that is going to look like up in the air, however many feet. That's the only thing, but if it meets the ordinance, then I guess we're okay with that. So that's all my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Garino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I also want to thank the applicant for their investment into the township and their faith in the township of West Orange. I also wanted to thank all the residents that came out through all the meetings, all the commentaries, whether pro or against. It's good to see people voice their opinions and educate us sometimes, things maybe we don't say. I'm really impressed and really grateful to the applicant for using I'm really impressed and really grateful to the applicant for using pedestrian safety advisory boards, comments, and complete streets. It's something we're very proud of, something that's working very well in this screen, and we approve and really appreciate how you're going to apply that to this new development, particularly as Mr. Klein has said about where he's happy. I mean, he's a traffic engineer, and he understands this more so than most people, but I'm really happy that you took those into considerations, because you want to make it an enjoyable visit for the shoppers and enjoyable, you know, for our community, and making and helping make West Orange a more walkable community. So thank you very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd just like to thank the applicant, the witnesses, members of the public and their commentary affirmative for dissenting, and the board for their patient listening. I trust that at the conclusion of this hearing, all perspectives be taken into account with even-handed consideration upon deliberation and recommendation to the town council ultimately.
Thank you. Mrs. Maraldo.
Yes, I also want to echo the sentiments of everyone, you know, for the community. And one of the things I want to point out is that my four years on this board, or four years plus or so, and I served with chairman of West Orange before. One of the things I liked about this particular application is that we talk about the community, how this is going to be best serving the community. I think in this particular application, we see the community come together and provide input in many different ways, for and against. And I think this was just a well thought out, well presented, both from those who are in a firm event and against. And I think it's something for us to consider, and I appreciate everyone's involvement, and I'm looking forward to making the vote for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Yes, sir. I would just echo all those sentiments. Thank you to all the people that have given such great inputs, such great testimony, and thank the applicant for making such an incredible investment in West Orange. I look forward to voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cadoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also thank the applicant experts, team, town professionals, the board, the public. I believe this review has been rigorous, and you can see us in the application. I look forward to voting.
Thank you. Okay, that's up to me. So as I review the voluminous paperwork, notes, and other things that I've had, I'm going to take a couple of minutes and share my thoughts, but as it is nine oh five, we're going to take a five-minute recess. For anybody who needs a bio break, I was told I didn't do this on a regular basis, so I'm making sure that around nine or nine oh five, everybody gets a bio break. Thank you, we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, let's go back on the record. Let's make sure everybody's back with us. Okay, Mr. Jensen.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen, were you at the last meeting for this application?
No, I was not.
Okay, did you listen to the video and/or listen to the record from the last meeting?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so you just have to sign a certification and provide that to the board attorney that you did listen to the the record and on the date that you did. Okay, Ms. McGovern, is that okay?
Yes, well, I don't think that Mr. Jensen's voting tonight, because all of the board members are here and ready to vote.
Okay, great.
I think it's, yes, he should submit the certification to Jamalat, but I don't think he's voting tonight.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, the board and the public, the applicant and your experts, the township and our professionals, I want to thank everybody for the input that you've had over these past four meetings. It is voluminous, is exacting, and it all is for the sole purpose of making this a better place to commute to a destination in the township of West Orange. It serves many functions. I have had the honor and privilege with the vice chairman and Mr. Cadoza and Mr. Klein to serve on at least two of the previous reexaminations of our master plan. Our master plan speaks to many areas of West Orange in this area specifically. And as we look overall, we're looking for pedestrian safety, which has increased. So let me go back for a second, many comments that we have now for more and more and more, I understand that, and we have to we have now, there's none, none, none. So do we have islands? There will be, there's testimony, there'll be over thirty-nine thousand square feet of islands in the parking lot, from zero to thirty-nine thousand square feet, more and more and more. I understand that we have to also have parking spaces.
Dr. Bagwell, you're not on camera.
Oh, I'm not on camera. Oh, okay, how about now?
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so we have more parking, we have more islands of trees, shrubs, and perennials in these islands. This will increase purview coverage where we have none. We will have a sidewalk on Prospect Avenue that will increase connectivity, which is one of the key elements of our master plan, and has spoken to by the Pedestrian Safety Commission. This will increase the ability of people to walk around the parking lot. It will increase the ability of people just to take a walk across and around this project. We have a number of credible witnesses who have provided expert testimony that has been recounted by and agreed to by our township professionals. Mr. Speck's testimony is interesting. He presented many years ago, and at this time, we will, I will go with our experts' testimony and professionals' testimony as to the major way to calculate the square footage of the lot. And having said that, as we look at this as a planning board and as people that live in the township of West Orange, if it was at a different board, would the end product be different? This is the way I look at things. Did we make a bad decision? And my mind, the answer is no. I cycled to this mall, I shop there, I was vaccinated there. I understand that that store has been fallow for a number of years. It will increase as, again, Mr. I'm sorry, it'll come to me in a minute. It will increase the number of jobs in town. It will be a community center for people, a pocket park, which I don't think was mentioned this evening. A pocket park is put into this area with purview coverage, as was asked for by one of the members of the public. So there is lower lighting, there is, there are, will be white roofs, decreasing the heat island effect. There will be, there is an irrigation system along Prospect Avenue to help maintain the greenery. There will be more bushes along Prospect Avenue. There will be better traffic flow patterns, and the county, for the people that asked about the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue and Prospect Avenue, the county will be reviewing this project, the county planning board and traffic commission will be reviewing this project. So they will have to sign off on anything that we say here tonight. They will look at traffic studies, they will do whatever they have to do, and they will make recommendations. The West Orange code specifically prohibits fast food restaurants in this site. I want to make sure the public understands that. Saying that I am lying, the zoning official is lying, the applicant is lying, is not reasonable to this application. We are working together, we all live in the same town, and we're making sure that within the zone plan, the appropriate type of business will be in those sites. The zoning official will be responsible to make sure, using our zoning ordinance, that the appropriate type of, and we're not saying it is a restaurant. I understand that Mr. Speck said he felt like it. Unfortunately, I can't do with feelings. I have to do with what I see. There is a building, and I've said this many times before, the planning board looks at a building. The applicant that we know is here is the Target. We know the other applicants on site are Whole Foods, and to the applicant's credit and the and Target and Whole Foods, Whole Foods had a restriction in its deed that there will be nothing in the parking lot in front of Whole Foods. At this point, Whole Foods has agreed to have having tree islands in the parking lot. So again, these are more than zero. The ability to change the parking lot and come up to date is vast economically, time-wise, and in the benefit of the public. And yes, I would love to see many other things in this parking lot and at the structure, and maybe one day, things will happen. But at this time, we have to work together for the betterment of the public. The signage that is here will be equal to, and two signs equal to that that you see in Essex Green, two hundred and twenty square foot signs. There'll be one sign that is slightly bigger. There is additional signage on the buildings, so they are basically wayfaring signs. You want to see where the places you're going to go, and that's where the signs will be. There will be signs, stop signs, there'll be one sign that has a solar panel on it. There will be directional signs for trucks behind the building where Whole Foods is and Target for safety purposes. There will be a fence behind there for more safety purposes. The applicant has done everything it possibly could into evaluating things that we have asked for, and the public has asked for. They've stepped up to the plate, and they have given us many things, even better than the application that was first brought before us. The public, I want to thank Mr. Malanga, Ms. Rudin, Mr. Malanga, and all the others who come here time after time and make us look again and again and again. It is because, and Mr. Lit went off, it is because of you that the board sits and the applicant listens, and we work together to ensure that we have the best application possible. To that end, unless anybody has any other comments.
I just have one comment you said about the white roofs. Are the white roofs, this is a question I guess for the applicant, are the white roofs only going on the brand-new buildings?
I'm sorry, I lost you. It's me. I'm sorry, say that again, Mr. Klein.
Are the white roofs only proposed on the new buildings, or will they retrofit the old existing buildings with white roofs?
Mr. Mies.
You're muted, Greg.
I'm sorry, the Target will also have a white roof.
So Whole Foods will still have its existing roof, which is, looks like it's a dark roof, but, all right.
For now, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, is it customary, maybe, I don't know who can answer this, is it customary if you replace that roof, that you replace it with a white roof, or do we have to make you replace it with a white roof?
I think that's probably a question of Mr. Montoro, but the proposal is Target would have a white roof, and the new buildings would have white roofs.
So if, when Whole Foods needs a new roof, Mr. Montoro, will they replace it with a white, is that customary to replace it with a white roof? Where they have to be told by an entity in the town that you have to put a white roof on?
I don't think, I don't think you can force somebody to replace their roof with a white roof unless, you know, at this point, because who knows how long it's going to be before they have to replace their roof.
No, no, that's, I'm sorry, I didn't say it right then. So it, when Whole Foods has to replace their roof, would they normally replace it with a white roof? Is that customary now?
It really depends on the tenant. Some tenants like, you know, white roofs more than regular roofs. I can't answer that for the tenant. It's really going to be up to the tenant.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Klein, is something that would be evaluated at that time, to see what's the what's the appropriate thing at that time?
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Only six feet high and, and, and.
Yeah, it's exceeding the maximum number, but Mr. Greigle, is that the size of the monument sign? I, I don't see that being. The size was okay on that.
Correct, it's just that overall number.
Just the, the total number of, of freestanding signs.
Yes.
Okay.
So that was in numbers.
Okay, um, alright, so the conditions as uh have been. Been evolving over the last five meetings. Uh, new sidewalks along Building C as suggested by Township Engineer Hess will be installed as shown on the revised site plan exhibit. Uh, a left turn only sign shall be installed at Suite D. Three drive through lane is recommended by Mr. Hess in his report dated June seventh, twenty twenty three. And as shown on the revised site plan exhibit. Applicant will comply with all of the recommendations set forth by Mr. Hess in his report of June seventh, twenty twenty three. With the exception of number six, EV spaces will be installed as per state statute in three phases. Number ten already provided on the plans, number fourteen relating to the stormwater. Maintenance manual as it was already provided. Number ten, a note regarding the zero point three foot candles for light poles to be added to the plans. Striping to be added to pavement in the rear of the main building to show fire lanes. Landscaping for parking lot islands to be shown on the plans as approved by the town forester. Employee parking and the placement of EV charging stations shall be installed in accordance with the revised site plan exhibit. Whereas further modified with the approval of the zoning official and township engineer. A new sidewalk will be added at the east corner on Eagle Rock near Verizon, reducing one parking space as shown on the revised site plan exhibit. Parking lot area in front of Whole Foods will do addition of green islands as shown in revised plans marked A five. At the hearing of October fourth, twenty twenty three. The wall mounted lights in the rear of Buildings A and B shall be lowered to fifteen feet. To reduce light onto residential properties as testified to by Mr. Delaney. A noise barrier of some type. To reduce noise from the courtyard between Buildings A and B as directed towards the resident to the north. As discussed by James Welch, shall be installed in addition to the additional five trees. Shown on the revised landscape plans marked A five. A crosswalk near Jersey Mikes and a, and the bus stop shall be added as shown on revised plans marked A five. There shall be no restaurants that meet the code definition of fast food restaurant permitted at the site. Applicant will plant and maintain majestic jade or provides to screen dumpsters as shown on the revised landscape plans. Applicants shall shorten screen wall to increase sightline for pedestrians at Building C as shown on the revised site plan exhibit. The applicant will conduct a video assessment on site of the sanitary sewer system and will add. All new and upgraded lines if deemed necessary by the township engineer. The applicant shall also provide an evaluation of the sewer functionality of the entire site. A fence and guardrail will be added on top of the retaining wall. If trees and shrubbery, trees or shrubbery depicted on plants, on the plans fail or die. They must be replaced in kind at the first opportunity during the growing season. The pylon squat, the pylon sign square footages shall be reduced to two hundred and sixty square feet for the tall sign. And two hundred and twenty square feet for the uh other two pylon signs. Um, applicant will add evergreen shrubs along Prospect Avenue approximately two to three feet tall. To buffer view of the cars but allow buildings to be seen. Uh, in addition to the screening with the gigantic, with the giant orbivites uh which were already proposed. And finally, um, the applicant will abide by the foresters' report of October twenty. Third, two thousand twenty three with the exception of the yearly report. And instead, the zoning officer will perform a yearly inspection and advise the applicant if anything. Needs to be replaced or replanted.
Okay, and the applicant will maintain the irrigation system on Prospect Avenue.
Okay.
In perpetuity. Do any other members of the board have any other conditions that we have not enumerated here? Okay, now there is a. There's a motion and a second, do any members of the board have any questions about what you have heard so far? Hearing none, Yamalat, I'm, I'm calling for the roll, the ayes are in favor, the noes are against.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Uh, yes, and I thank the owners of the property for this investment and improvement.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wox?
Yes.
Chairman Bogart?
Oh baby, yes, the ayes have it, thank you very much, the application passes. I would like to thank all of the. People who had input into this application, Mr. Mies, I want to thank you very much, you have been. Well respected by our board and you have come to the table. To negotiate on behalf of the applicant and target and we appreciate that, we welcome target into town, we thank the applicant. And uh, we look forward to an amazing project and we also thank the members of the public. Who have come before the planning board and spent your time to share with us your concerns and your hopes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, much appreciate it, we thank the board.
Thank you very much. And with that, ladies and gentlemen. The next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty three, seven thirty PM via Zoom. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion, I make a motion, yes, all in favor? Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.